Six thirty, calling this session or meeting of the Imperial Planning Commission to order. We have roll call.
Commissioner Harvey. Let the record reflect that she's joined virtually. Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Mendoza.
Here.
Chairman Hamarnas.
Here.
And Commissioner Abadi is absent for the record.
All staff with a pledge of allegiance? Public appearances be one. Matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission concerning any item within the Commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the Commission in writing. Are there anybody, anybody here that has an item that is not on the agenda? Very good. B two, matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission concerning any item within the Commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the Commission in writing. And I'm guessing we have a person to address the item on the agenda tonight, correct? Very good.
Chairman, just to reflect, we did not receive any comments prior to tonight's meeting to be read into the record.
That question? Consent calendar. Approved Planning Commission meetings for November tenth, twenty twenty one. Everybody get the minutes to review?
Um, we did, but before we make a motion on this, um, I wanted to, um, find out from staff if the meetings reflect that they last, that the consent agenda was pulled and it was because we hadn't received the September meetings for review. So the September meetings still haven't come to us for approval, correct?
That is correct.
So then I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the meeting minutes for November tenth.
For second? It's been moved and seconded. Have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rivera.
Who?
Vice Chair Mendoza.
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Chairman Hamarnas.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
All right. Item D, Planning Commission New Business Discussion Action. Item D one. I'm gonna open public hearing at this time. Discussion Action Conditional Use Permit CUP twenty one dash one one to allow for the use and operation of an indoor-outdoor restaurant and bar, including serving alcohol for onsite consumption, cigar lounge and occasional indoor-outdoor live entertainment at the following address. Two three nine three Highway eighty six, Central California nine two two five one. APN number zero six four dash three five two dash zero zero four. Do we have a staff report for this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, we'd like to introduce, uh, Ivan Cordero, our new planner for Community Development Department. And, and she'll be doing the presentation tonight.
Very good.
Good evening Commissioners. Um, the item before you is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a restaurant bar located at twenty three ninety three Highway eighty six. The applicant is proposing a restaurant bar that will operate under the name of Mona Lisa Cocktails and Cuisine, offering multicultural cuisine with table service for approximately one hundred guests. The proposed plans include private dining areas, patio seating, bar seating, as well as secluded cigar lounge located in the east part of the building. Hours of operation will be from ten AM to two AM, Monday through Saturday, and nine AM to two AM on Sundays. In addition, the applicant is proposing to provide guests with occasional live entertainment, both indoors and outdoors. The proposed project is located within the C two commercial, general commercial zone, which requires a conditional use permit for eating and drinking establishments serving alcoholic beverage, beverages and/or entertainment. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section fifteen three zero one of the guidelines. The public hearing scheduled for tonight, December twenty two, twenty twenty one, was duly noticed in the Imperial Valley Press on December twelfth, twenty twenty one, and a public hearing notice was sent to all property owners within three hundred feet of the proposed project. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit application to allow the use and operation of the restaurant bar serving alcoholic beverages and the cigar lounge. The applicant, Mr. Namau, and staff are in attendance to answer any questions you may have.
Good, thank you. Any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Um, the first one has to do with the parking lot itself. The, with it being a dirt, it appears to be a dirt parking lot.
It's, um.
It's, um. Or dirt with gravel, with maybe some base in there or something.
Are you talking about the, on the one on the west?
Yeah.
Big lot, the, no, it is, it is asphalt. It is just, it needs a little bit of, um, street sweeping there, really dirty asphalt.
Yeah, I didn't say that, it does not look like asphalt at all.
Yeah.
Okay, and is there gonna be any type of striping in the parking lot?
It will be required to have a striping once they go through the plan review. Yes, it will require that, to have that.
I mean, I don't, I'm wanting to say, um, thinking about when it used to operate, that it used to get a lot, congregant, there was like a lot of water would retain there. Has that been taken care of, or is there still, oh? I just can remember like huge, it would be like flooded if it rained or anything. Is there any kind of drainage there or anything that?
It, yes, it has drainage. Are you talking about the parking lot, or are you talking about the area on? Oh, okay, yes, it has drainage, yes.
I can remember whenever we have like large amounts of rain, not that it happens often, but whenever it does.
Yeah, the, it was not so much there, but the flow on, on, um, Highway eighty six, it was just a very slow flow. Um, and that's why it was all the way back, it was backed up all the way on Natin Road.
Okay. I was just concerned about the PM ten issues, if it was, cause it, it, I thought it was a dirt parking lot with maybe some base down there or something.
Oh, it's asphalt.
And my next question had to do with the conditions of approval on the conditional use permit. Um, item number one just calls out that it's a nightclub. But is, it is a nightclub and restaurant, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, cause the staff reported that's the restaurant nightclub, but the, the actual conditions of approval just say nightclub.
Yes, and on, and on the new resolution, um, that is in front of you, um, we stated all the uses that will be, um, applicable to the project.
Cause I was just concerned with it, with it reading purpose as a nightclub, and then further down it says no additional uses allowed, that there's not gonna be a conflict if it doesn't call out that there's a restaurant. There's not gonna be a problem with the restaurant operating there?
Restaurant by himself, it wouldn't have a problem.
And Commissioner Mendoza, a- as to that, the, um, the resolution, the updated one that was provided to you also included the use cigar lounge.
Okay.
And so, um, I would recommend, uh, should there be a motion to approve this, that, um, in those conditions of approval, cigar lounge is included as a use, if that is the Planning Commission's desire.
Um, and I'm glad to see Imperial County Fire because my next question has to do with, um, the information provided by Imperial County Fire that they're recommending, or it appears that they're, um, recommending that this cigar lounge not be allowed under the conditional use permit, and I was curious to know why. And, um, there's in there, it says, there, it says Imperial County Fire Department would like to express that the cigar lounge not be in allowed use. And if the use is allowed, the Imperial County Fire Department has a list of requirements and conditions, and those aren't in here. I'm curious to know what the conditions that Imperial County Fire would have on it.
Um, so the extra conditions that we would recommend for the cigar lounge due to the, um, size that is being proposed, um, it doesn't require fire sprinklers under the code, but because of the scar, cigar lounge and open flame and others, that would be a requirement that the Imperial County Fire Department, the main one would be that fire sprinkler system be added to the building for the cigar lounge. Um, it would also in the code require, um, ventilation for that cigar lounge that would be separate from the rest of the building to remove any of the smoke atmosphere. And, um, the last thing would be, or last couple items would be the furnishing would need to meet certain specifications for non-flammable or combustible furnishings that would be in that cigar lounge due to the open flame and hot ashes. And policies and procedures would need to be written and submitted to us on how they would dispose of the hot ashes and how they would be, um, allowing the lighting of the cigar lounge for our approval. Those would be the extra conditions. The main, the main one being the fire sprinkler system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That a, the sprinklers, that a recommendation, or is there some state code that specifically says that you have to have a sprinkler system?
The, the sprinkler would be the recommendation portion of it, the rest of it would be requirements that's in, in the fire code.
Okay. And, and, and just to add to it, um, it all depends also on during the plan review, um, since they're doing an assembly use, I, um, the code might require, um, the to install fire sprinkler system throughout the building. So, but until we get the architectural plans, uh, we won't know, uh, but all the uses.
Hi, this is Commissioner Harvey, I do have a question. Um, having never been to a cigar lounge, could I get more information from the applicant as to what that entails?
Oh, you, you, come on up to the, come on up to the microphone and introduce yourself and, and, uh, tell us about it.
And also let the record reflect Commissioner Abadi has joined the meeting.
Well, my name is Stuart, and, uh, I'm here with my partner Al and Marcos, also one of our partners. Um, so typically a cigar lounge has lounge seating, and they sell cigars. A lot of times you're able to smoke your cigar in the lounge. That's pretty much it, and then, um, it's just making it comfortable, a safe, uh, safe space to smoke a cigar. Lounge seating and, and that's pretty much it. Do you have any other questions? Who asked it, okay, well Veronica was.
Yes, I do. But anyway, the question is, will the smoke lounge be separated from the? Separated, even if you buy a cigar, there's a separate room to smoke. How are you guys setting it up?
That's a good question, yeah, yeah, so it is, it, it has to be separated because of ABC, so we won't be able to sell alcohol in that area. So we do have to separate it.
As far as circulation?
Yeah, it does have to be a separate, separate type of, uh, deal, yeah.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Yeah, I, did you, did it answer your question, or do you have some more follow-up questions? Cause you initiated that round of questioning.
I do. As far as the operating hours, um, and it being a restaurant onsite, will that be something where like lunch is gonna be there daily, since it's, um, every day open at ten AM? Is that something where it's gonna be not just so much a nightclub use where it's gonna be busy in the evenings or certain evenings of the week, but also for lunchtime use? Like what, what types of, um, of what, when will, you know, is it gonna be a lunch and dinner thing, or just a dinner thing?
Yeah, so we will have lunch and dinner, and you know, that's our goal, to be able to stay busy from, uh, the time we opened to the time we closed, and we felt like moving away from the nightclub type of concept because we felt that's gonna be more of like a night type of, uh, night type of business. So we wanna be able to provide a service throughout lunch to dinner, and yet, so we will have a lunch menu and a dinner menu. It's gonna be more, it's, maybe nightclub is probably confusing the concept, it's not really a nightclub. It's more of a lounge where we're serving food. There's not, it's not gonna have a, like a nightclub bottle service type of atmosphere, that's not what we're going for. We're, we're really not interested in that type of business.
Okay, cause when I think nightclub, I do think like there'll be a dance floor and music and, and that type of atmosphere, so it won't be.
But there will be music, so like, just like when you go to many, like nice restaurants in San Diego where they have like, uh, it's a little bit more livelier now. Like if you go to an STK or, or, uh, any, any, uh, like nice restaurant, they are, they even have, provide a DJ at times. Not full-time, but they do have it where they kinda raise the music up a little bit more than, than just a regular, say a steakhouse, a regular steakhouse, it won't be like that, there'll, there'll be music there, and, uh, we'll have, what was the other question you, you asked?
Oh, that was, that was a question.
Oh, okay.
So it's not like there'll be like a, after the restaurant closes, uh, bands and like every, every weekend or, you know, during the evening, you know, where there's a bar and a dance floor and.
There, there used to be a, an existing dance floor there, and we removed it, cause we, we, we don't wanna have a dance floor. We'd rather have just normal lounge type of seating throughout the area, where people are sitting in their private area, enjoying a meal, and then having a drink with it. So there's not gonna be any dedicated, uh, uh, dance floor, but you have a question?
Yeah, that's okay. So what I'm familiar with is like in Little Italy, Buon Appetito has il sonno, which is essentially a bar. And then they have like couches and chairs and tables where people can go and have a glass of wine. If they want order off the menu, then it could either be served where they're sitting at the couch, or if they're at the table. That's what I'm familiar with. Are you planning to do something comparable?
Exactly what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice environment.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be a real, we, we, we're, we're aiming for like a real mature environment. It's not gonna, we, we don't want any rift trap there, you, we don't want, it's gonna be a real nice controlled environment. And we're, we're also, another thing too, I wanna mention is, we don't wanna do a sports bar. We wanna, we wanna include in our menus nice looking cocktails where a, a husband, a wife will be, uh, would be very comfortable sitting there enjoying their meal and drink without peop- people, I, I mean, I, don't get me wrong, I like to go to a sports bar, watch a game, but I feel like that turns off a lot of people. So it'll be very comfortable for me to take my girlfriend there, where they're not gonna, she, she feels comfortable, there's not gonna be a fight over there, you know what I mean? So we wanna make sure, that's, that's one thing, we wanna make sure it's safety. So we don't wanna have, have any, any, um, in their minds, customers in their minds that, oh, this is a place that always has, has fights because you got overall Raiders Chargers game, you know what I mean? So i- it's not gonna be like that. And one of the reasons why we've kind of wanted to separate, so the cigar, they keep mentioning the cigar lounge. The cigar lounge might not go into effect because of this, this rule that we found out with ABC. Uh, they, they don't want us to include the alcohol with the cigars, and then they wanted to do the separation. So we've decided, instead of, instead of doing that, we wanna keep that area where the, we're calling it kinda like a whiskey lounge, more of like, if you wanna watch a sports game, you can do it in that area. But if you wanna have, enjoy a meal with your, with your wife, you can do it in that area. Yeah, um, but if you're interested in just, um, watching the, the Monday night game, we'll have TV. It will be like a wall-to-wall set, type of setup with a bunch of TVs, where you can cut, and then our ceilings, we plan on having ceilings where it's almost like movie theater style seating on one side, where you can just sit down, have your drink next to you, and then you have TVs lined up in front of you with, with all the games uh, that, that are gonna be available that day. So that's kinda why we want to separate it, so we don't get into the sports bar type of feel on, on the main area.
I.
Oh, go ahead.
Why is it the county fire doesn't want the cigar lounge?
Mainly due, um, to our past things within the county, anything, um, kinda goes into the cannabis and the lit, and the light, like using smoking inside, it, there's always that chant, the higher potential for fire to happen. That's the only reason, we wouldn't say, if we had the fire sprinklers, we would be much more comfortable with allowing it to be used because we have that accidental smoking indoors that could happen, that, and then with it being a, a, a usage, which is simply usage and, and having people in there, um, that's our concern is, once we have the smoke, if it's not discarded right, we have a fire, we have people, that's where the spr- fire sprinklers, we would feel much more comfortable if fire sprinklers would be installed and an auto- automatic fire sprinklers. That, that's, that's why we're saying not to at the way the building sits, and with his proposed use, it doesn't require the fire sprinklers. Um, due to the square footage, the occupant load and all that. But with the smoke lounge, it's kind of a different, um, we don't see a lot of it. It's not, it's not a very, um, active use within a lot of things, so that's what we're proposing. We, the code doesn't have that fire sprinklers for it, so if fire sprinklers were there, we would be much more comfortable with it and, and not have a problem other than what's specified in the, uh, fire code.
So let me ask this from staff, um, this is being presented to us as a restaurant nightclub. It's not, you're saying that you're going away from the idea of a cigar lounge, and it doesn't appear that that's, is that gonna be part of the, the resolution we're approving, is the inclusion of a cigar lounge? The reason I'm asking is because if we're being asked to approve this with a cigar lounge and the county fire is wanting to place on their, asking us to place on their conditions that a sprinkler system be involved because of the cigar lounge, but yet you're saying you're not going to have a cigar lounge. If we approve it with this way, and there's a potential we're gonna require you to put sprinkler systems when you don't even plan on doing a cigar lounge, maybe we need to consider not approving this with a cigar lounge. Because a sprinkler system's a pretty hefty price to have to put in there for something you're maybe not even gonna do.
Yeah, so when we got the, the, the conditions, and we read that, and we, we, we seen the recommendation from, uh, the fire department, we've decided that we would stay away, just so we don't trigger any, anything else, which would, it would, it would trigger the fire suppression system. And that's why we, um, we decided we would hold up on that, the cigar lounge. But I wasn't sure if we were supposed to respond and then change the, change it. I mean, I, I don't know how, I didn't know how that worked.
Speaking, so, so the, the initial application, and, and Othon can correct me if I'm wrong, did include a request for a cigar lounge. The updated resolution that was provided to you tonight, um, included the language for a cigar lounge that was inadvertently left off, um, from the backup. Um, with, uh, the representation tonight, i- if a cigar lounge is not being sought, then the Commission can approve the CUP without the, the facets related to the cigar lounge. And, and should the applicant change their mind in the future, they can always seek to amend their CUP if they so desire. But I think it depends on, on, um, if that's not what is being sought, I think that clarifies a lot of the issues.
For the project, uh, in question, I think more so what he's kinda referring to is, um, when we received the conditions of approval, um, we realized that, that for us to be able to move forward with the cigar lounge, there were, uh, certain things that were being required that we certainly did not wanna put an extra burden on, uh, the fire department. So we did talk briefly about if, uh, it seemed to kinda murk the waters a bit, we would step away from that particular concept of the cigar lounge, and maybe morph it into something that is slightly different, that would be a little bit more, uh, approval friendly, if you will. Um, but it is, uh, it is something like, like, uh, you mentioned. Um, if we are allowed and able to move forward with it, we'd, you know, we'd like to include it in the project, or, um, something that can, uh, you know, if we can be approved with that sort of pending on the side with future plans to be able to move it. Um, it's still a little bit, um, tricky with ABC. Um, they're asking for certain things that we're still not quite sure how to move forward with. Um, so it is kind of more so the state that is kinda just implementing things a little bit different. And we're kinda having just, uh, trying to find the best way to navigate through the process and figure out how we can sort of please everyone across the board, uh, to be able to move forward with that concept. Or, um, if we need to scrap it to make things easier for the approval of the permits, uh, to move forward, then, you know, that's something that we're okay with doing. So it's not necessarily that we wanna deal away with it, um, we're just, you know, trying to figure out the best way to kinda move forward.
Um, according to your plans, you're gonna have an outside area.
Correct.
I'm pretty sure you can smoke outside.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you could, I mean, other than the fact that it's a little warm in the summertime.
Sure.
I mean, you could do that, I don't think that's an issue with the fire department at all, because it's in the outdoor area, and I believe that area was used for that when it was a club before.
Right, yeah, the purpose of the lounge was, it was sort of like a members-only kinda feel, a little bit more upscale, where you could come in and kinda just unwind after a long day, and if you're a cigar aficionado, you know, you take that uh, pretty serious, so, you know, be able to kind of enjoy, uh, a moment where you're just kind of in a more condensed environment. Uh, but definitely not opposed to, to morphing it or moving it to the outside section, uh, if that is, uh, something that makes, you know, everything a little bit smoother for everyone.
Um, is there a way if the Commission decides to go through with this, that we can place the condition or add the condition that we'll approve it with a cigar lounge, but if at the point you and, they intend to operate the cigar lounge, they would be required to install a fire suppression system?
Um, yes, um, and if they don't.
And, and comply with any?
Comply with, yes, um, and be, they, they, they don't move forward with that use, then they don't have to comply with that section of it.
I'm just, I mean, if, if you're going to operate it, then we need these, but I don't wanna have, I don't wanna put a condition on there that you have to install a fire suppression system if it, for the next ten years you don't operate it. That's a, that's a really hefty cost.
Yeah, of course.
But at the same time, I want to ensure that if you are gonna operate it, that the, the county fires wishes are, 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 you know, done where there is a fire suppression system.
Well, I'm reading the way the CUP's laid out here, uh, even if we approve it with it in it, if they don't meet the requirements laid out with the fire department, then that becomes a non-point in the CUP if I'm reading it. Right, cause it's here in the conditional use, yeah, number twenty. Has fire department's recommendations, and it, and it discusses what they would want. With them also recommending not to do it unless you do those things. Right? So if it's left in there, and they don't decide not to do that, and they don't do that, then it's a non-issue.
As I understand it, the staff recommendation is, is to approve cigar lounge as part of the conditional use permit, provided they comply with the fire department standards. So I think, I think we're all saying pretty much the same thing, is, if I'm understanding, that is, i- if they choose to go forward with cigar lounge, there's fire department requirements, including a fire suppression system.
But just to, to correct, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the suppression system isn't a requirement, it's a request, correct?
That, that is correct, um, due to the, the square footage and the use of the building, it's under the square fo- footage, uh, threshold for, uh, A two, and so it wouldn't need fire suppression. That, that's our recommendation, only at the cigar lounge, uh, a fire suppression or fire sprinkler system be installed.
Don't have to make a, side we don't want.
That's. I have a question, um, does the kitchen area require any sort of?
Which, which area?
The kitchen area, since it's going to be a restaurant, there, is there going to be a kitchen area?
Yes, so the kitchen, um, by the California fire code, any, any commercial ki- kitchen, excuse me, any commercial cooking, um, kitchen requires a hood suppression system. That's more of a standalone, um, pre-engineered system that would be required for them to, whether there's one onsite, I don't know, um, from previous usage, but it would have to be brought up to current code, um, by a licensed contractor or installed by a licensed contractor, but that's a standalone system just for the commercial cooking.
Okay, thanks.
What else?
On this end is, um, do we need to amend the, the opening where it says, uh, nightclub? Can we go ahead and not worry about that later on down the road?
Yeah, ju- speaking from where I sit, I would say yes. You, because you have an inconsistency. You because you have an inconsistency if with respect to the resolution, and then you have a condition that goes out of its way to say. It's granted for the sole purpose of a nightclub and you must first uh uh no additional uses are allowed regardless of whether or not. It is permitted, so yeah, this is this is the planning commission's opportunity to clean to clean that part up. As as well as uh to make clear about the cigar lounge. And the conditions that are gonna be associated with it, should they choose to move forward with that use.
I know, I was just trying, I think I think we need to, well, it's we'll get to that in a minute.
I think the last time we had this, we basically. Laid out what changes we wanted and then just made a motion to approve with those changes, correct, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we need to worry about the scar lounge portion, I think it's kind of self controlling. Because it has fire department has some recommend- has a recommendation to other standards and frankly, the state standards for that are so difficult. That that could kill the project before we even need to, fire department even needs to get involved with it, because it's pretty horrendous, yeah. Uh and as far as the cleaning up the language. We could just reduce, take out uh soul.
Chairman Hammerness, if I may, the um the the first whereas on the resolution was updated to read. Operation of a restaurant nightclub and cigar lounge, I think you could use that language, so it says it's granted for the sole purpose of a. Restaurant nightclub and cigar lounge or sole purposes, and I think that will take care of that sentence or that condition.
We're not gonna drop nightclub, but we're gonna include these other things to broaden the description. What you're saying, okay, yes, so when you make the motion.
So so here, let's try and clean this up, I I'll make a motion, but before I do that.
But we gotta close the hearing first. We haven't gotten, we haven't closed the public hearing yet. That's okay, better we iron this out now in public hearing, make sure everybody's agreed before we close it and then actually fix it, so. Any other questions from the commission for these gentlemen? Fire department, any questions for us or anything else, anything you need to ask us or wanna clarify further? All right, all right, then I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of uh D one. Okay. Now we need a motion, uh. Are we have any others, there's another staff thing we need to do on this, right, we're done with that, so now we need to make a motion to. Approve this or not approve it, so now we need.
Ready, you're ready for this, let's go. Okay, I will make, I feel like I'm getting ready to. I will make a motion for the approval of resolution PC twenty twenty one dash sixteen. And the uh which approving the conditional use permit CUP twelve eleven. Allowing for the use and operation of a restaurant and bar and cigar lounge. Twenty one eleven, okay, I'm kinda mixed up, okay? For the uh operation of a restaurant and bar and cigar lounge. Um at the twenty three ninety three highway eighty six with the following conditions, first of which on the CUP. We will uh amend that to read that include the um restaurant and cigar lounge. And I would also make the recommendation that we include the requirement of a fire suppression system. If the cigar lounge becomes operational or if the 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 applicant decides to go forward with the cigar lounge. It will be required if they choose to do that. And I believe those were the only ones we were putting on there, so I make that motion.
Oh, you snuck the requiring a suppression system in there.
Well, that's my, if you if you feel otherwise, I I I'd like to honor the Imperial County Fire Department's wishes um or recommendation on that. And again, it's only becomes necessary if this cigar lounge becomes operational, I don't think we need to make it a requirement. If they choose not to go through with that.
But it's clear on the motion, will we ask for a second? Okay, is there a second? Motion has been moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes.
Commissioner Abadi?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doza?
Yes.
Chairman Hammerness?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Yvonne, and welcome to Imperial, we're sad to see you leave El Centro, but welcome to Imperial.
All right, that was fun. So let's see, that takes care of number one there, so we're done with that, so commissioners reports. Commissioner Body, do you have anything you would like to report on or share with us or?
Just a a memory of when I was. But I remember that place. That was one of my primary. Passing by there. I don't think this is gonna be the case, I don't think, so I have high hopes in a positive nature.
No, no, we're we're done with the public hearing.
Cause I've been in Imperial for fifteen years, so it existed during the heydays of construction.
I I remember that.
You remember that?
I remember it was a carpet place, but I mean, you know.
And as such, we wish you the best of luck in your your business. Yes, look forward to being able to go to it like I do in Little Italy, yes. A nice quick lunch.
It was a nice, you say it is, I would like to go there when it's real open. Commissioner Mendoza, you have any reports for us or anything like that?
I don't, I we had a meeting of the friends and unfortunately it was at a time and a. That I was unable to attend, so I'm looking forward, we I've been to one, but then the the follow up one, I was unable to attend because I had a conflict. Um and I am hoping whenever Alexis reports out, we can find out what happened at that uh El Paseo. Um other than that, I wish everyone the happiest of holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and may you have a wonderful time and safe. With your families and. That's it.
Rivera?
At the end of the year, uh I'm going to start again from the top at the beginning of the year, I just uh just kinda waiting to see what happens with the uh arts commission. Um same thing, uh looking over towards El Paseo. Uh for that set part of town, uh some projects for uh the coming year. Uh but other than that, um like I said, we'll we'll start at the top in January. Uh we'll let this one uh, we'll write it out the next couple of days. Uh Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, I hope the new year is prosperous and everybody stays warm and dry here in the next couple of days.
We're in the desert, any reason we wouldn't be warm and dry?
Well, I'm going to San Diego tomorrow, so I know I'm not gonna be.
Well, I should have something to report, cause I was supposed to attend a stakeholders meeting, but I missed the email, so I missed the meeting and I apologize profusely for my. Failure to see that. Um with that said, um it's been a fun year, everybody, appreciate you uh what we've done so far on the board. Appreciate your tolerance of my chairmanship and um. And uh and that, so. Have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and uh we'll start off uh next year with uh. Oh, I, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I always save mine for the end, sorry, anyway, Happy New Year. Veronica, I'm sorry.
Usually you have me sitting next to you laughing with you, so. Um I just wanna say also Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year and. I really wanna thank uh the city staff for all that they've done this year, preparing us for these meetings, keeping us informed and just. Supporting us throughout the entire year, we're really blessed with all of you that are there and um and a big welcome to our new city. Banner, I look forward to working with you and um that's all I have.
Mark, Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
When is the next meeting set?
Second. Let's see.
Nineteenth?
It should be the twelfth.
Oh, okay.
Provided we have something to meet about, which we won't know yet. So the next two meetings should be the twelfth and the twenty sixth if we have items to discuss. You're welcome. Staff. Mister Attorney, you have anything for us?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mister Community Development?
Um just uh be safe, uh Merry Christmas and uh Happy New Years, thank you.
Mister Manager?
It's been a pleasure, uh Happy Holidays.
I'll I'll make my uh rundown uh brief here, just to kinda touch on um for Friends of Imperial Parks that uh. Vice Chairman Doza referenced, we did have our work party at Paseo del Sol. We had a great turnout from the uh Boy Scout troop uh four zero seven zero. Uh we had about sixteen kids out there uh with their uh one of their parents or guardians that all participated and erected. Three um or two gazebos rather, uh three picnic areas, barbecue areas, as well as filled in the planners and so it was it was a great. Day um to get out there and we were able to answer some questions with the community and I think that's what. What really was able to shed some light on on some of the projects going out there, uh the. Active play uh area that is currently in fabrication, uh we are looking forward to February having that. Uh groundbreaking and installation, so we'll welcome the community out for that as well. Um as far as the uh arts district and uh community, uh National Endowment of the Arts did. Open their solicitations for the uh solicitations rather, for the our town grants. Uh so using the standards that the committee put together, we will be applying for that, we have a couple of ideas, so um. Uh Commissioner Harvey, be ready for some meetings in your near future in the near in the new year. Uh you'll have that on your calendar, we'll need to discuss some ideas uh moving forward with that. And last but not least, uh State Route eighty six, uh Chairman Hammerness, we did have our uh stakeholders group, there'll be another one. Uh coming up in February, so we'll make sure that that gets on your calendar. Uh what we did discuss are the architectural standards, land and zoning along eighty six corridor. So we'll be doing another round of surveys to get the community outreach and input as to what they would like to see in the different. Parts of uh the city along that route and and what they think should unfold in those areas and what standards they would like to see. And how we can align our general plan and impact fees with those. Absolutely.
I mean, I I don't have a problem with it being during the workday, but I do have to make sure I don't have any meetings and ask for the time off and uh twenty four hours wasn't enough.
I'm gonna, yes, we're gonna make sure that we have a a end of the day and and everything for for those, yes.
All right, with that said, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.